Something I'd like to inject into the agenda, but we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I'd like to exercise the chair's prerogative to welcome Dr. Tracy Youngberg to the table with us here as the new acting superintendent. And I've asked Tracy to share a few words with us.
Sure, first of all, I'm very happy to be seated at the big people's table. I've been telling them I've moved up in the world. I'm humbled and excited, maybe a little dazed about the role and responsibilities that I've taken on in the last seven days, but I want to thank my team, who I hope you'll get to see showcased a lot more often than they may have been in the past. I was able to meet with the leadership team yesterday and sort of share my vision of moving forward. My goal is to not lose any ground, build on the structures that are in place in support of the Students for Wyndham, and I want to work collaboratively with the Board of Ed and community members, students, teachers, administrators, in hopes of reaching our goals, the first of which relates directly to getting our budget passed and building a practical and feasible budget for 2021. So, looking forward to the work, and I thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. So, we're going to be, I just want to acknowledge, this is the last meeting of this existing board, and we're missing a couple of people tonight, Dr. Jaime Gomez, Susie Torado, and Mike DeSagne. Mike and Susie will no longer be on the board after the new board is seated, which will, the swearing-in ceremony is taking place at 6:00 PM next Tuesday, November 19th, at Town Hall up in the Bellingham Auditorium for all the candidates who were elected to office. And December 11th will be the first full board meeting of the newly seated board, and so we'll be getting together as a new board on the other end of all this. But I want to congratulate everybody who ran, regardless of what the results were. It takes a lot to run, and you don't always make it, but I think you learn a lot in the process, and we have some new people who have stepped up to be on the board, and it should be pretty interesting next couple of years together. I want to acknowledge, I don't see Lisa Dunneck in the room, but I do see Katina Caban-Owen, who is going to be sworn in next week here with us, so, nice to see you. And I want to acknowledge another candidate, Kim Swart is here with us, and thank you for putting yourself out there, and I know we won't be losing sight of you. You'll be with us in this next phase of our work together. So, first order of business is approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes. First one is the October 23rd special meeting. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ildah, seconded by Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor? The next order of business is the October 23rd, 2019 meeting. Entertain a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Tracy, seconded by Ildah. Any discussion? All those in favor? And then finally, the October 31st, 2019 special meeting. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Tracy, seconded by Ildah. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Now, we're up for public comment. Is there anybody who signed up or who didn't sign up who would like to speak under public Nobody, okay. So, we'll move on. We're going to hear the superintendent's reports, and I'll hand it over to you.
Sounds good to me. I was actually talking to Margaret about this, Ms. Chady, about this, about which ones I should highlight, because I think they're all worth celebrating. We have a little bit of celebrations around our athletic teams, our musicians, culture and heritage, school spirit, teacher development, teacher leadership, so they're all really good things. The soccer team unfortunately lost 1 to 0, right? Tough one in the freezing cold tonight.
Yeah, freezing cold.
But we do want to recognize the fact that they made it to the championship, Division II ECC Tournament Championship. We also want to recognize the most valuable player went to senior Alfonso Vasquez, so congratulations to that team.
Can we give them a hand?
Yeah, absolutely. We also want to congratulate students Jordi Gonzalez and Manuel Silva Nieves, who participated in the Charter Oak Festival at Coventry High School on November 4th through the 6th. These students from schools across eastern Connecticut nominate their top musicians to perform, so congratulations to those musicians for making that distinction. We had a group of Wyndham High School students who traveled to the University of Bridgeport to participate in the National Hispanic College Fair. That's really impressive. Congratulations to those 15 students. I actually had the opportunity to go to the girls volleyball, Dig Pink, on Friday night, a really great event. I was watching a piece of the alumni game versus the varsity team, so that was exciting. And then I also saw a piece of the staff team playing against the kids, so it was a really, they were excited, pumped up. Everyone was in pink, a really good event, so congratulations to the girls who worked on putting that whole event together. Wyndham Middle School had a cultural heritage celebration last week, and one of the pieces of that celebration was unveiling the mural that's done in their main hallway. If you haven't had a chance to see it, you really should. The artist, Faith Satterfield, actually explained to us that she told a story with the kids' paintings. The painting is beautiful, and you notice that right away, but you don't actually realize there's a story being told by it. And once she tells you the story, you say, wow, it's an impressive piece of artwork. So, I would tell you, if you haven't been down to the middle school to see that mural, you should get there. It's absolutely beautiful, and our kids had a hand in putting it together. The next bullet on our list is the Teacher Leaders for Equity Program. We just went through the process of putting together the second cohort of that group of people, which is representative of each of our schools. We have at least one person from each of our schools across the district who will be focused on ensuring more equitable teaching and learning practices in each of our schools, so we're really excited about that. That is a program that's completely funded by Nellie May, Nellie May Educational Foundation, so we're really pleased to continue that work. Moving on to the recognizing Dr. Mundambi, the Director of ESAL and bilingual and world languages. She and Amy Fin Smith, our dual-language specialist, are actually presenting in New Mexico at a conference for dual-language, and we're really proud of their work and the fact that they've been asked to do presentations outside of the state of Connecticut is impressive all by itself, so congratulations to them. And something that's not in our list, but we just want to recognize, because I see, Ms. Swart, you are, Ms. Swart is being recognized by the State Education Resource Center. She's been selected to receive the 2019 Parental Involvement Recognition Award. We're going to be celebrating you bigger next meeting, but I just wanted to recognize that you did get state recognition. It's impressive, so congratulations. More to come on that, but we're proud of all of our athletes, students, teacher leaders, musicians, and everyone who contributes to the positive Wyndham Public Schools. Moving right along, and parent leaders.
People have any questions on that portion of the report? No, okay, go right ahead.
Next piece is just letting the board know that we have received some donations for the Three Kings Day celebration, and based on policy 3280, we're supposed to keep you informed of any monies that we're receiving, so that's been listed in your board packet. I don't know if there's any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
And the last piece of the report is just giving you the first reading of the cellphone policy. We had a really productive policy committee meeting that took a pre-existing policy and made it Wyndham's own, so we wanted to give the board an opportunity to do their first reading. We are trying to make sure that the learning environment is not interrupted by cellphones, and we know that's a really difficult thing to do in this day and age where every kid has a phone, so we hope that this policy helps to put some guidelines in place for that.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
Excuse me, I had two questions about the draft of the policy. One is, it says somewhere about students not bringing a computer to school, and unfortunately, a cellphone is a computer, so maybe we ought to rethink that line, because, I mean, I understand you don't want them to bring their own laptop, but the cellphone is effectively a computer. And the other one is, right at the end where, I guess I'd have to look at the language again, but it says something about not using it except as defined below, and then nowhere below does it give you any as defined, so either there should be something defined below or that line should be scratched.
Okay.
That's right at the end before the things that says you can't use the cellphone for.
Except as defined below.
Except as defined below, and then there's nothing defined below.
So, I wonder if that just got left off of, okay.
So, either something's omitted that should be there, or that line needs to...
Thank you for those observations. Anybody else have anything they want to ask about the, or suggest about the policy? It's the first reading.
Trying to see where it is.
So, just clarification, Dr. Sewell, the reference to students not being permitted, it says, "Students will be permitted to bring their own computer to school to enhance their academic program only with prior permission from the administration." Are you...
Yeah, okay, but if they're bringing a cellphone, they've essentially bought a computer. So, I think what you mean is a laptop computer, or something, or even probably even an iPad or a pad, so, I mean, I'm not sure exactly. The airlines have a way of defining it, where they'll let you use your iPad and your phone, but you can't use a laptop when the plane is being taken off, so there's just some way of saying something, you know, what is it exactly that you don't want them to bring without permission?
What page are you on? That's on page 16.
He's trying to pull it up and read it.
Yeah, well, it's all in red type here, so it's easy to find.
Page 16.
Yeah, it's the top of page 16. Page 16?
Yeah, what was that? I just read through this thing, and I just happened to...
Okay. It's at the top of page 16. Okay, yes, okay. Then they'll work on clarifying it before the second reading?
Right, absolutely.
Anything else? I'm talking right into the microphone. Who can't, you're saying you can't hear?
Some of us cannot hear well.
There's a request from the audience that people speak into the microphone when they talk. Thanks. Anything else?
Come a little close.
On that? Okay, so, well, thank you very much, and we're on to committee reports, and, oh, before we get on to committee reports, I do want to suggest that we add an item to the agenda, amend the agenda under Section 8, under action items. I would like to add, entertain a motion to add action on issues regarding the acting and assistant, and acting superintendent and acting assistant superintendent, and I will explain when I get to the executive committee report.
You're looking for a motion?
Yes.
I have such a motion.
Tracy made the motion, seconded by Murphy. Any discussion? That will be item number, I guess it would be H. Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. So, Finance and Audit Committee, you guys are on.
Okay, so, the Finance and Audit Committee met last week. We have some transfer requests that are in the packet that we have a motion to vote on later in this meeting. The other thing that we talked about at some length was trying to bring the 2019-20 budget in line with the minimum budget requirement amount that is on the ballot in December 3rd, is the budget that we're likely to live with, because that's the minimum budget requirement. In order to get there, let's see, there is a handout, if you, it's in the packet, and there's this eye test that was handed out earlier. It's almost easier to magnify what's in the packet and read it, but basically what it shows is, is that we've already, we have encumbrances for things like the certified teacher salaries and whatnot that exceed the amount that we paid last year by about $715,000, and there are a number of other items that are similarly greater than we paid last year, which means that we have to find reductions elsewhere in the budget to stay under the minimum budget requirement. We've identified a few things. There is a surplus, for example, in the ETNA pension account that has been closed for older retirees that we could use to pay the premium that's due on the current Morgan Stanley pension plan that's being funded for more recent retirees. That's something we can do one year only, I think, but that would save about $400,000 in this year's budget. I'm not, didn't have the exact number last week, but it's in that ballpark somewhere. We have about $171,000 in currently unfilled, non-certified positions. We've asked Dr. Youngberg to review the positions that haven't been filled and determine which ones we can satisfactorily not fill for the remainder of the year. In other words, some of those positions, we may necessarily have to fill anyway, so we probably can't save the entire $171,000, but we'll save as much of it as we can. Okay, so the sticky wicket that the board's going to have to consider as we move forward, not tonight, but we need to think about it, is there's $482,000 in unexpended equipment, computers, and furniture. Roughly $300,000 or so of that would be required to continue the rollout of the Chromebook program. If we don't continue the retirement of the rollout of the Chromebook program, we save a lot of that money. Some of it will have to be spent to buy a sufficient number of computers to continue state testing requirements that are all online these days, so we have to have enough computers to do those, but we could save much of that money, but at some damage to our continuing curriculum. So, there's a trade-off there that we're going to have to struggle with. And so, we're still a ways away from actually getting the budget to balance, and we'll continue to try and get this closer to, but we're probably going to have to find about $1 million somewhere. Insurance will save about 400, which is good. We can save some of the non-certified employees, and we can save some of that computer money, but we're still probably looking for 200,000 or 300,000 more somewhere in the budget, and I'm not sure yet where that's going to come from. We really don't want to lay anybody off, so that's where our struggle is at this point. So, that's my report.
Is there anything you'd like to add, Mark? Or any questions?
Mary was at the meeting.
And Mary, okay.
As you pointed out, I was not at the meeting, unfortunately, but my concern is that I think we need to put a deadline on this. We drifted last year through the whole year of how we're going to make up a deficit and rolled into an $800,000 deficit at the end of the year, because we never made a firm commitment, and I feel we're going the same way. It's kind of like maybe 400,000 of this, and it's kind of like maybe 100 of that, and it's kind of like, I really feel like we need to know by the next meeting where we're going to make these cuts. We need a hardcore recommendation. The problem is, the longer we go, the one-staff person cut becomes two-staff people, because you've already paid half the salary.
Right.
So, we know one way or the other, whether the budget gets passed in the beginning of December or not, we've got to plan on the MBR, we've got to plan on last year's money, so I'm really looking for some really hard numbers from the administration as to, and I would like to recommend that we get them by the next board meeting.
Well, I'd like, you know, we're thinking the same way. I just, I know you have your hand up, Tracy, but I just wanted to respond. I actually think we need to have this wrapped up in December, and I was thinking that we should give Dr. Youngberg a few weeks to sort of get her feet into things, and I know that she's been taking a look at some things that we hadn't originally been looking at, and so I'd like to suggest that we wrap it up at our meeting in December, if we can, and if not, we're darn close, and we maybe have to have a special meeting to get it wrapped up, but I don't think we should be going into the next calendar year without a definite plan in place for how we're going to deal with this. That's my personal feeling. Tracy?
I also wasn't at the meeting last Wednesday. I had a conflict, but I'm just, we have this surplus over here, but then I'm looking at the actuals, and we've significantly overspent already in some categories that are really concerning to me. 594% in tuition, other district in the state, I believe that's the line that goes across. It's hard when it's printed this small for me to make sure I'm on the right line, but...
I know, I know.
I'm with you.
Or tuition to private sources, and it could be special ed, and I know special ed always goes over, and there are things we can't account for, but also voag, transportation is 230% over. All of these huge overages are somewhere that we have to make sure we can cover before, and I'm all for them getting the computers they need and for testing and stuff like that. I don't want to be negative about it, but I want to make sure that we don't run a $1 million deficit at the end of the year, because that'll make next year's budget even more challenging. So, that's one of my concerns. And the other is that we had the teachers' union grievance come up, and nothing, I don't know if anything has happened. I don't know if the attorneys have spoken to each other, and we've kind of had a break in leadership and a little bit of a change there, and I know Dr. Youngberg is working as hard as she can and getting little sleep and stuff like that, but that's something we have to keep in mind, too, because if we have to add some of that to this budget, then we have to make sure we're prepared for that before we go and do a huge expenditure. It may need to get whittled down a little bit some. Those are just my concerns before we go and say, yes, let's buy $400,000 worth of Chromebooks, laptops, whatever we have to buy. Ooh, thanks, Chris. Whatever we have to buy, but I want to make sure those things are covered, the transportation things. We can't just say, sorry, you have to walk for the rest of the year. We have to make sure those things are covered before we go and make a decent-sized expenditure. And if there was a justification for them at the meeting, I'd be happy to hear it, so...
Oh, and sometimes when it shows on the books that money is like way over, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to stay at that rate for the full year, so we need to get a handle on it.
Right, some of it's encumbrances, and I understand that, but some things haven't been encumbered that may still come along.
Right.
And these huge percentages, I kind of scan down and see where the percentages are at before I look at all the line items, and I looked at them the other day in our email, but, you know, some of those huge overages are something that we really kind of need to keep an eye on before we go and expend money. And, Dr. Youngberg, have you started working on next year's budget yet? I know we usually start in October, and I know that you're just getting your feet wet. I understand that we've thrown you in the deep end of the pool.
Day seven, no, but we've already started having those conversations, because trying to untangle where we're getting this money from is helping us figure out where we need to, you know, the path we need to take moving forward, so.
Okay.
We are having those discussions, absolutely, and I do think I can have recommendations for you for the next board meeting.
Okay.
Well, and hopefully the Finance and Audit Committee will get a chance to vet those before we look at them. And Mary?
Yeah, when I was, we were at the meeting last week, I was concerned that, you know, that expense in technology for computers, and I don't like to see the rollout stopped, but I do wonder if we could ask the state, is it not possible to use the old exams that are on paper with pencils? And because we are in a desperate, or really, we could have a year off from exams, in my opinion, but that would be a tougher one.
Yeah.
I think maybe that, I would really cut that before I would cut a staff person.
Any other comments on the Finance and Audit Committee? And I guess I just want to pose the question, do the members of the board, we've heard from some of you, but do we feel like we should be in a position in December to resolve this, to the best of our ability, knowing that the budget is a dynamic thing, and you may want to make other mid-year adjustments as we go along? Murphy, you had your hand up?
Well, if you, there are a bunch of footnotes under this report that basically say all of the encumbrances aren't in yet, which means one of the difficulties in trying to resolve this thing quickly is that we may not necessarily know all of the expenses that we are going to be required to undertake.
Right.
By, we'll have a meeting on December 4th. We should know, well, we shouldn't have a problem with the pension, you know, figuring out what that is.
Hey, I'm reading your question, and 911 sounds rocky.
We should know by, we should know by December to what extent we need to fill unfilled, non-certified staff positions.
Or not.
And we should, and we should know what the minimum number of computers we need. I suspect that the state will tell us that they don't have a paper exam anymore. When they contracted with Smarter Balance, they went all out online, and there is no paper version. But, yeah, the question is, can you loan us up a bunch of old computers to use? That might be, you know, and I'm sure we'll dig around looking for grant money to the greatest extent possible, but we do that anyway, so...
Well, I mean, I do want to say, again, the budget is dynamic. We can do our best to get it into balance in December, but that won't be the end of the story. We'll have to be looking at it every month, all the way through the year. I don't know whether Rita wants to say anything about this, about the encumbrances and other things that we've been talking about.
I just did, I did want to say something about the tuition and the estimated excess costs that we are going to be putting in there. The reports aren't due until December, so, you know, we're going to do our best to make an estimate of what the excess cost is going to be reversed, which will affect the tuition lines that are over. Also, you know, once the grants get awarded, I'm not sure why this keeps going out, once the grants get awarded, then we can look at all the grants to make sure they're all encumbered as well.
So, we'll do our best.
Yeah, I was just keeping an eye on the whole picture, rather than saying, oh, we have this extra on this one line, let's, you know, buy it, which, like I said, computers are necessary and stuff like that, but I don't want to be overspending when we...
Right. So, anything else on the Finance and Audit? I just want to say that, and I'm not saying this to be gratuitous or whatever, I actually am really happy to see these reports in our monthly packets, and this is a huge improvement, and thanks to everybody on the board who was dogged about making sure that this happened, and it's just, it's going to be very helpful for us as we go forward this year. Okay, School Planning and Design Committee?
My staff member took a much-needed vacation last week, so we did not have our committee meeting. She approached me, it's Ms. Tomakos, and, you know, she approached me and said, hey, I'm going to be gone for the next week or so. So, I was going to schedule one for tomorrow, but I neglected to get ahold of Ms. Testa to file an agenda, so I guess we'll just go for the December meeting.
Okay.
Unless there's anything pressing.
Anything we need to know about, any projects that...
Well, the high school renovation, we met with the state, and they are going to allocate us some additional funds, so we're excited about that. We're waiting to see exactly how that comes down, but the project's going to get pushed out probably another year until things really get done, and there's some small projects they're looking to start working on within the building, and it won't affect our grant status if we delay the construction part of it. We had a very long meeting, and a very productive meeting with the state, and so the only thing that really, you know, came other than the additional funds was that they understood our programming and the needs that we had, and some of the things we are going to be doing. They've asked to do a walkthrough of the building, which we've scheduled for the beginning of December. I'll get you the date, Dr. Youngberg. And then they're going to have a... And then they're going to have another meeting with their architects and our architects and our construction managers, take a look at exactly what they need. They're going to report it back to Costas, and then they're going to come to us with what they think is a more reasonable number when they started looking at all of the needs that we have and all of the things. They're talking about space sizes, and if you build a new high school today, you don't have 12-foot hallways like we have now. And, you know, some of our bigger spaces kind of absorbed some of our reimbursement rates. So they didn't quantify our reimbursement rate, but he says if he gave us a waiver before that he would be more than amenable to giving us the same waiver again. So those are positive things that are coming out of that. And my mom part of me and my parent part of me is hoping that if we've pushed the construction of the high school back a little bit, maybe when the budget passes, we can find a little money to fix the pool. So, you know, if it's going to be three or four more years before we start construction, or two or three more years even, $15,000 might be worth it to be able to let the Special Olympics swim here, to have our swim team swim here, to put it back in the high school curricula until the construction starts. So that's just my little mom tidbit going in there.
Okay. Have discussion about that, I'm sure. Anything, any questions? Or anything you want to add? Mary, anything you want to add?
No. So what year are we looking at?
2021. We can do everything up, going out to bid and everything else up to signing contracts. So progress won't stop. It'll continue. We'll probably go out to bid, but we can't sign contracts until we are confirmed. It'll go, everything has to be put into the Office of School Construction Grants or whatever it is by June 30th of this year, but it won't get voted on by the legislature, the additional appropriation, until May, June, or July of next year. So that's why it gets pushed out a year for the additional funds. And we really can't finalize any kind of a project until we know exactly what our budget is. And that's what's been, you know, moving us around a little bit in the meantime.
And we really want those additional funds.
We desperately need the additional funds. There's no way we could really do an adequate job in this building at $78 million. And the state saw that when they saw some of the changes that we wanted to make. And they were impressed that we eliminated the pool in order to not have to add on construction space and stuff like that. So they were excited about that as well.
I know that was a long and complicated meeting, and I know you had to take time off from work to go to it.
It's worth it.
Thank you very, very much. Anything else? Okay, policy committee.
Well, as Dr. Youngberg said, we worked hard on the cell phone policy, cellphone and electronic policy. And we're going to need support from the administration to enforce it because I already got slapped from two students at my house. I told them this is coming because they were like trying to eat with their cell phone in their hand. And I told them about it, and they're like, oh, nobody's going to take my cell phone away from me. And I was trying to explain to them that, you know, when we were in school, we waited till the end of the day to make a phone call or go to the office.
We had payphones. We had one payphone at my high school, so.
Or you go to the office and you say, this is an emergency. You made a call, you know? But this generation, I don't know how, we're going to be, we're going to have to go into the classrooms and help them. Because, you know, like I said, some of these kids are going to be, they're going to have it on their hip, but we're going to have to do something different because it's very distracting to the classroom. So that's that. We'll bring you the second reading next time. And we also have the second one, the 3323 Policy Procurement Business Non-Instructional Operations. We'll bring that to you as an action item for your approval. So we worked hard on that one also for a while. So hopefully it meets your approval. And that's it. And then we'll meet, we meet again next Thursday? We're meeting earlier. We're meeting at 3:30 next Thursday. The...
21st?
21st.
21st.
Yeah, this month is flowing by.
I know. Any questions? Yes?
An advice from counsel. We were supposed to look at personnel policies. Have you guys started a list of personnel policies to take a look at?
We have not.
Okay.
We were, we, it was, it was, our legal counsel advised that we review and revise.
Almost all of our personnel policies.
It's a pretty big job.
They're antiquated.
And they're antiquated and out of sync with like current...
Sorry, Steph.
...laws and rules and regulations. And I know that Attorney Ritter had offered to give us some like templates or something even that we could look at, yeah.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah. I think that's a project that needs to be undertaken now. We've put it off long enough, so. Thanks for reminding us of that, Tracy.
It was part of the audit, and it came out around that time and stuff like that. And I just thought, we need to make sure we, as a board at least, what everybody else does in, you know, town is up to them, but we start making headway on the policies we need to.
Any other questions for policy? Thank you. Executive committee met this evening. We had three items on our agenda. The first was to discuss the fact that, given the decisions that were made at the end of October regarding Dr. Garcia and our approval of Dr. Tracy Youngberg as the acting superintendent, that really left us in a position where, and I'm going to hand out this memo from Dr. Youngberg to the board members that haven't seen it. Could you send one over to Ilda? And Mark and Tracy each need one?
Thank you, Lynn.
I met with Dr. Youngberg last week, just day two of her acting superintendent. I had asked her to take a look at the work that she had on her plate as assistant superintendent and also the work that needed to be done as acting superintendent, and to come to the meeting prepared to make suggestions about how things could be redistributed and what to do. And the proposal that's on the table before you is to move Neil Weathers into the position of acting assistant superintendent. And in the memo, you'll see that Dr. Youngberg made suggestions about how the work will get divvied up. So basically, we have two people doing the job of three people for the remainder of the school year. And what we'd like to, that's why I added this item to the agenda. I think we need to take action this evening. The sooner the better because we need to like officially move Neil Weathers into the position of acting assistant superintendent so that Dr. Youngberg can operationalize all of this, although I'm sure they're probably pretty much doing a lot of it already. And then on advice of our legal counsel, I had a consultation with them about what happens when you appoint an acting superintendent. Do you give them a stipend? How does that work? And so there's a suggested increase in each of them getting additional compensation that is through June 30th of nineteen, of 2020. And it would be $15,000 for Dr. Youngberg and $10,000 for Neil Weathers. And that would be, a contract would be written up that would have that be effective November 4th through June 30th. And then on June 30th, unless some different decisions were made, they would both move back into their, their old salaries, I mean, their existing salaries without a stipend and into the old positions. So that's what we talked about. I don't know whether you want to add anything to that or share any of your thinking on this?
Just want to say that Neil, I believe, is the best choice to take over this shared role because he and I have been working so closely together on all of, everything, teaching, learning, and just curriculum instruction and assessment. So I feel like not only do I trust him implicitly, we've worked very closely together on big projects. So I think he's the right person to divvy up the work without impacting any of our other departments. We wouldn't be filling his current position. He'd be doing that along with the additional responsibilities as the acting soup, assistant soup, excuse me. So, you know, we tried to think strategically about how we could get the work done, like you said, with two people doing the work of three people, so.
So, well, we can discuss that more under action, but does anybody have any questions about that? So that was very important. I'm glad that we can move forward on that. Well, hopefully we'll take action on it. The other thing that we talked about was ticking off progress on the forensic analysis recommendations, which we're going to talk about in the next item on the agenda. And then the final thing we talked about was the proposed calendar, which we're set to take action on this evening. And a proposed Board of Ed calendar was sent out to us in our board packets. The dates for the regular board meetings, which are the second and fourth Wednesday of each month, including the retreat in the, later in the year, seemed okay. But when we took a look at the proposed committee schedules, it didn't sync up with what we agreed to do in our forensic analysis recommendations, which was to have the finance and audit committee meet twice a month, really, on the, on the second and...
First and third.
The first and third Wednesdays of the month. We really needed to have those in place earlier in the month so that if there were items that needed to be worked on or flagged before the board meetings, the finance and audit committee would get a chance to do that. So when we take action this evening, the executive committee is recommending that we just change the committee calendar to that and that the executive committee meet the second Wednesday of the month at 5:30 PM so that it could, you know, have an hour to meet and have a little break before the board meeting starts at 7:00 PM on those evenings. So we're suggesting those changes. That's all we have to report from the executive committee. Any questions? Okay. So next item on the agenda is the forensic analysis recommendations. I just want to share with folks a few highlights. In bullet number one on the list that we adapted, adopted at the end of August, and this is posted on the Board of Ed website also, we asked for some more deliberation and more clarity around sort of who did what, what the, who was responsible for what and finance and management of the finances of the Board of Ed. And in our board packets, we all got this flow chart, I mean organizational chart. And so we talked a little bit about that at the executive committee, and I don't know whether people got a chance to review it before the meeting this evening, but did people have any questions about this? And we can also talk more about it at finance and audit or at a future board meeting. Now, I know this was worked on by Rita, I believe, and Dr. Garcia, and not you at all. Okay, yeah, so it was done prior. Anybody have any questions? So keep this, you know, I think it's really important for folks to know who makes, who does what work in that office and how the, you know, how the flow of decisions work in that office.
Lynn?
Yes?
Dr. Youngberg, do you have any comments or concerns on this? You're okay with it?
It looks like it makes sense, like it's a logical progression of what should happen. So I trust, I'll defer to Rita on any specific questions, but it looks logical to me.
Yeah, this is what was put in place in July.
Okay.
Yeah, the workflow.
Okay. Mark?
I'm not married to this, but the staff open position approval actually kind of looks backwards to me. I would think it would, it would flow down for the superintendent rather than up to her. If somebody wants a new position, that should be, if the superintendent doesn't want that new position, why am I having everybody else go through the approval? I just kind of, I see, I see the line, but I would reverse it and have the superintendent and the human resource director maybe do the approval first for a new, for a new position. I just...
It's not for new. It's for open. It's not for new positions. It's for open, filling positions. It's not for new positions.
Right.
When there's an open position.
But it goes down. The department had requested first.
So you're suggesting that in the event the superintendent didn't want to fill the open position, they should have the right to not say that that's going to be posted?
Right. I would think, filling any, filling any position is at your disposal so the superintendent would make the decision.
It's just the posting process, so the superintendent can make the decision not to post it. This is just the posting process. It's not the actual hiring of the, of the person. This is the posting process. I probably should have put posting.
As long as the staff works with it, just...
Maybe that should be clarified in this document so that it's not confusing. It was interesting today at our meeting, we did have the town manager join us, and so we got to have a pretty lengthy discussion in our executive committee meeting when we were talking about this document, about how to move forward on being clear about the difference between money that's in the health funds and the reserve funds that comes from Board of Ed versus comes from the town, accountability on all that. The town manager did, did say in the meeting that he would have us, have reports generated for us that divided out that information. And that was great. We also had a lengthy conversation about the resolution, draft resolution that has been worked on, on and off for the past couple of months. I think probably the budget stuff and the budget referendum stuff and the elections probably kept some progress from moving forward on all that. I want to be clear to folks listening that the resolution has to be passed by the town council. That is not something that we have the authority to pass, but they have asked the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance to look at the resolution and make any suggestions. We were told by the town, we were informed by the town manager this evening that he was going to be, he thought it would likely be acted upon at one of the first meetings in December, once the new town council was seated and it had been vetted. I asked for the most recent version of the resolution because I'd like to share it with our legal counsel. That's a request that a couple of you made recently. So we're moving forward on that. Last call for any thoughts on the language of that resolution. If you guys have any ideas, you really need to get them to me in the next week or so. Yes, Tracy?
Is there a more updated resolution? Because we only saw the initial iteration, and some of the comments that I was going to make were discussed in a town council meeting. So I didn't, I haven't said anything further on it, but, but I want to make sure that we see the final...
Yes.
And that Jessica sees, our attorney sees the final iteration before we get our...
I asked...
Make sure we protect ourselves.
I asked for the latest iteration, thinking, knowing that it might go through more changes, but I'd at least like to share that with our counsel and have you all look at it one more time, too.
And then the town manager said that he would make sure that we saw reports on the health reserve.
That we were given reports.
Will we have any control over those once they're shown to us? Or is that out of our control because it's a town fund?
It isn't out of our control, especially once this resolution gets passed, because the board will have a seat on that committee that will be set up. And, and the, it's a really important piece of the forensic analysis recommendations is to get that committee in place so that there is a way for parties from the three boards to get regular updates and, and keep any decision-making about how money gets diverted or whatever can't happen without going through that committee, so.
Thank you.
The other thing that's in progress is that we're going to be taking a look at some of the ways, working with HR, to make sure that we're figuring out the best ways possible to make sure that all the employees that are on health benefits and retirees... and retirees are up to, you know, updated to the...
Current.
Yeah, current, and that we're not carrying people that we shouldn't be carrying or having retirees putting in the wrong amount or whatever. So, that's something we'll be working on. I know you're already, people are already working on that, but we're going to, we're going to be really on top of it moving forward. And there was nothing else to really report except for the whole last section of the stuff that needs to get done in cooperation with the town. I think that that's going to move along. And we are going to act on the policy around purchase today at the board meeting, so, purchasing. So, we're, we've almost completed the checklist. We're getting, we're getting there. Any questions? Okay. So, now we're on to action items. Proposed approval of the 2020 Board of Education meeting dates, including committee meetings.
Make a motion?
To adopt?
Yeah.
With the amendments that were suggested by the Executive Committee?
The Budget and Finance will go to two meetings a month, the first and third, a week before. I won't be there on January 1st.
The Executive Committee will meet on the second.
The second.
On the second Wednesday, 5:30.
In the weekly update, can we get an updated calendar? If it's not this week, it can be next week. I know it's already Wednesday, so Wednesday evening. So, if we don't get it this Friday, if we could get an updated calendar next Friday, that would be fabulous.
Yeah, we have a deadline that we have to submit this to Town Hall.
December 1st.
December 1st, so that's why it's good we're taking action now. And we can get it out, we also need to get it out to the incoming board members to make sure that they can get these dates on their calendars.
And thank you for moving school planning and design back to once a month.
So, when's the high school graduation date this spring?
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made by Tracy, seconded by Ildah. Murphy?
So, what's the date of high school graduation?
June 14th.
14th?
June 14th.
I have a graduate, so, June 14th. It was the 13th, yep, it was the 13th, and we had that Friday off, so that's the 14th.
So, if we have snow days, what do you get?
Then it'll get pushed back, yes.
So, the reason I'm asking is that we've scheduled the board meeting for the 17th?
Right.
If we have a couple of snow days?
It happens every year. We move it back and we don't get any snow days. We move it up and we get 400 snow days.
I think we'll just have to adjust.
Well, one way to adjust would be to schedule the board meeting for the 24th and then not worry about...
What do people, what do...
There is an extra Wednesday in June, so we could do that.
That's a good idea.
What do people think?
Graduation was the 12th, though, the graduation now with the extra day is the 15th, I'm sorry, it was a Friday. Looped around. So, the 15th would be graduation, the end of the school year right now.
If we schedule the board meeting for the 24th, there's virtually no way it's going to run into the, no matter what the weather does.
It's fine.
Is that fine with folks? So, we need a motion to amend the motion to change...
I amend my motion to change the June board meeting to June 24th instead of the 17th. Does that work, Ms. Testa? And Ildah has to second, agree to second it?
Seconded by Ildah. Any further discussion? Good catch. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, okay. Proposed approval of the revised policy 3323, procurement, business, non-instructional operation.
So moved?
Motion to make to approve? Seconded by Ildah. Any discussion based on what people saw in their packets?
Do we remember what the original amount was? Was it originally $5,000?
I thought it was one.
It was originally $1,000? Okay, I couldn't remember. So, we moved it from 75 back to 5? That seems reasonable. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, now we have, we have a lot of action. Proposed approval of submission of the Alliance and Priority School District Consolidated Grant Application. I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mark, second?
I'd like to move that we consolidate the three grant approvals into a single motion. Can we do that?
It's fine.
It's fine with the people who made the motion? Okay, the motion was accepted to change the language to approve C, D, and E. One is, what?
Aren't there four? There's four grants.
Four there?
Okay, C, four. C, D, E, and F. One has to do with the Alliance and Priority School District Consolidated Grant. The other one is submitting the District Federal Consolidated Grant Application for ESEA Federal Grants, Title I and Title II. The third is approval of submission of the Title III Part A English Language Acquisition and Language Enhancement Grant Application. And the fourth is proposed approval of submission of the State Bilingual Grant Application. Any discussion? Yeah, the motion was made by Mark and seconded by Ildah. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Just for the record, these are routine ones that we do every year. We just have to vote on it. None of these are anything new, so.
So, people who are watching this don't think that we just like say, oh, you can do whatever you want?
And any grants we can get are fabulous, so.
They say noted, right, exactly.
Are there any applications?
Okay, G is proposed approval of budget transfers.
Yes, and you have the...
Those are in your packet. I'll entertain a motion and then we can discuss.
So moved?
Second.
Tracy, Murphy, seconded. Any questions, discussion?
I love the explanation, Rita, thank you very much. Explanation above them because sometimes, yeah, sometimes I look at them and I'm like, I have no idea why we're moving that money. So, I really appreciate it.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. And then, we have H, which is, I'll entertain a motion to approve Neil Weathers as acting assistant superintendent and approve the salary stipend of $15,000 for Dr. Tracy Youngberg and $10,000 for Neil Weathers, including mileage reimbursement? I'll entertain a motion on that. So moved by Tracy?
I would make a slight amendment or addition that the approval is pending the signature of the contracts as suggested.
Right. Oh, yes.
Yeah, she's got it right up.
Right, we have to, yeah.
The increase is based on the signing of the contract.
The signing of the contracts. Did you get that, Janet? Okay, and just, I'll say, a motion was made, who made it?
I made the motion.
Okay, Tracy and Mark. And then, the, and just to be clear for everybody, it's through June 30th, 2020. Retroactive to November 4th, 2019. Any further discussion? I just want to thank Tracy and Neil for stepping up. Thank you. All those in favor? Okay. Neil, you want to stand up? I don't know whether everybody knows you.
They know Neil.
Last item on the agenda is public comment.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay, my name is Kristin DeGray. I live in Willamette. I have a son at E.O. Smith, a daughter at Barrows, and I teach at Northman School. I just wanted to ask Dr. Youngberg and the board to consider a policy about using donors' shoes for teachers or GoFundMe and other funding programs like that. Teachers were previously using them and were told by the previous superintendent that they couldn't. And I'm finding that in this tough times of budget, it would be really helpful for some of our teachers to be able to get some funding through those avenues. So, just something to think about, something up for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up. So noted. Yeah, we don't, yeah. Oh, come on up, Al.
Yeah, Ildah has discussed on her agenda is creating one.
Smiling faces. It's nice, so.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
You want to identify yourself?
Al Korzinski, Willamette, Connecticut. I have one in the high school, one in the middle school, two previous graduates. So, nice to see obviously everybody here. It seems, everyone seems to be in good spirits, which is fantastic. And it sounds like there's some really good things going on in the district. We just came off of, it seems like a really difficult political climate in our town, but a lot of folks came out to vote. And I'm just reminded, I was just at an SGC meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we were kind of joking around about it, but we weren't because we were talking about making copies and there was a, there's a, like a paper, there was a paper shortage. So, a real-world conversation about how the budget impacts our students. There was a shortage on paper, and I'm sure there's a lot more things that are not getting done because of the budget. So, a lot of things have happened since last spring, since all this funding and all this other junk took place. It sounds like the Board of Ed is making steps towards the recommendations that were out there regarding the funding and all that wonderful stuff. And the town is making steps. There's obviously been changes, you know, with central office. And it seems reasonable to me that a lot of people went out to vote this past election, that there was some momentum in terms of people going out and doing their part to ensure people get into the right places and make the right decisions. And it doesn't seem unreasonable to me for the Board of Ed to go back to the Board of Finance and ask for some money back, based on the good faith, I don't know if the right word is good faith, but based on some of the changes and some of the progress that you've made and based on the state of where the schools, the district, may be at because of the budget. Yes, I know it might be a difficult ask, but why not ask? You really have zero to lose to ask for some money back on the budget. Perhaps, I don't know, maybe people were just saying no because the budget wasn't high enough. We can go along that route if we choose to. But the point is, is people are out there to vote and support people who support the schools. We saw that by who was elected here for the Board of Ed and for many other positions. Why not be a little courageous and go to our Board of Finance and Town Council, whoever you need to go to, and say, we need some more money back and here's why? And I'm just going to make that suggestion and recommendation to you. I can, I will tell you this, that you will have, certainly have the support of myself, all that I have access to in terms of our voices and volunteers and our PAC. We know our schools need this money. And I'm glad to see that there's some more money coming back for the renovation project. I wish that number was sooner when it was going to get started, but it is what it is. That's it, thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Hi, good evening. Kim Swor, Willamette, Dr. My son is at the middle school. So, something Al said kind of jogged my memory. First, congratulations to the folks that ran and are re-elected and, you know, welcome. You know, like Al, I will do everything that I have in my power to help get the budget passed. I think, you know, historically, that's what many of us have always done. But it occurred to me when I saw the voter turnout for the Board of Education, there was a lot of people that came out and voted for many of you. And many of you go out and canvass for the budget each year, but I'm just thinking if the same level of effort was applied to the budget to get, excuse me, for the election, to get people to come out and vote for folks, that, you know, if that same level of effort was applied between now and December, maybe we would have a far greater success of getting that budget passed. So, just kind of a challenge maybe to meet with Al and I, that we see all of the votes on the board, how to do the same thing.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? That's the last thing on the agenda and adjourn at 8:07.
Ooh.
Tracy made the motion to adjourn, seconded by Mark. All those in favor of adjourning?
That was a fast meeting.
Yeah.